The time is 6:30. Charlie, could you please do the roll call for us?
Certainly. Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Gitzoni?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Mora?
Here.
Commissioner Wax?
Here.
Vice Chair Simons has an excused absence this evening. And Chair Chaff.
Here.
So we have a quorum of six commissioners present.
Great. And then Charlie would go ahead and read the introductory remarks part of the COVID script, please.
Thank you. And then we'll segue into item three from that. I would like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to California Assembly Bill 361. The city was previously complying with the Brown Act orders issued by the governor, which were aimed at containing the novel coronavirus and which expired on September 30th, 2021. AB 361 gives local agencies the authority to continue to host virtual meetings until January 1st, 2024, as long as California is still under a governor-declared state of emergency. In order to continue meetings subject to this exemption to the Brown Act, the Planning Commission must make findings by majority vote no later than 30 days after it starts using the exemption and every 30 days thereafter, and will do so at this meeting and until the governor lifts the state of emergency. City Hall is open to the public during regular business hours, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Wednesday through Friday. The planning and building counter has different hours, so please check or make an appointment before visiting. The agenda states that the public may view this meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main city of Emeryville Planning Commission webpage and clicking on the link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press *9 on your phone. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as via e-notification and on social media. At this time, Chair Chaff, I would like to go to item three and ask for a motion to approve the resolution declaring the need for the Planning Commission to continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public, which contains the required AB 361 findings.
Thank you, Charlie. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to put the item.
I heard Commissioner Henry make the motion, and Commissioner Wax seconded. All right. So on, let's see. On the motion, Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gitzoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons is absent. Chair Chaff?
Aye.
Six ayes, the resolution is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we'll now move to item four, public comment. Charlie, would you please read the general public's comments section of the script?
Sure. Now is the time for the public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on this agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for me to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press *9 on your phone. This time, I'll check to see if I've received any online speaker cards. I do not see any. I do have one online speaker card for an item that is on the agenda, but I don't have any for general public comment. I also do not see any raised hands among the attendees. So at this time, Chair Chaff, I think it would be appropriate for you to close the public comment.
Great. Thank you, Charlie. So we'll now close the public comment portion. We'll move to item five, which is approval of the action minutes. And this is from the July 28th meeting. Do any commissioners have any comments on the minutes? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to do that.
Wait a second.
So that was Commissioner Gitzoni, seconded by Commissioner Graham, correct? All right. On the motion to approve the minutes, Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gitzoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons is absent. Chair Chaff?
Aye.
Six ayes, the minutes are approved. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, we will now go to item six, which is the Community Development Director's Report. Over to you, Charlie.
Thank you. It will be very brief tonight. First, regarding City Council actions, as you may know, the council normally does not meet in August. They did meet briefly on August 16th in order to approve the AB 361 findings to allow for continued remote meetings. That meeting lasted about five minutes. Their next regular meeting will be on September 6th. In other news, a reception was held yesterday evening on Hollis Street in front of Fire Station 35 for the unveiling of the city's newest mural by artist, I hope I can pronounce this, Guillaume Olivier. It was well-attended by city staff, members of the Public Art Committee, and the public, including Planning Commissioner Chair Chaff. And movies in the park are back. Tomorrow night, there will be a showing of Ratatouille at Christie Park, beginning at sunset, sponsored by the Public Market, Pixar, and the Community Services Department. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Are there any questions for Charlie? I don't see any questions. Looking forward to the movie tomorrow. All right, great. Then we'll move on to item seven, which is disclosure of ex parte communications and identification of conflicts of interest. So, Jack, do you want to go ahead? Commissioner Gitzoni, sorry.
Thank you. Yes, I have a conflict with the, from the first item, and that's because the client, the applicant is a client of my employer.
Any other conflicts of interest to announce?
I believe Commissioner Henry may have a conflict on 8.1.
So is a conflict, you mean a recusal? Is the same as a conflict?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. I live within the 500-foot radius, so I will be recusing myself from that item.
And just to remind the commissioners and the public for clarification, Commissioner Gitzoni's conflict arises from a business interest, which means that he will need to leave the meeting entirely during item 8.1, and I will text him when the item is over so that he can return. Commissioner Henry's conflict arises because of the proximity of his residence, and in that case, he does not have to leave the meeting. He will be moved to the attendee group, and he can comment as a member of the public during that meeting.
Great. Any other conflicts of interest or ex parte communications? Okay, great. So we'll move on then to our first and only public hearing, item 8.1. And this is on the Marketplace redevelopment project for parcels A, B, and F. At this time, I believe we need to move Jack. Did he? Commissioner Gitzoni?
Oh, sorry, yes. He left on his own. I need to move Commissioner Henry, sorry, to the attendee group.
Great. And then I believe, Muru, you're giving the staff presentation. Wonderful, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Chaff and Planning Commissioners. I'm going to go ahead and share my presentation. Just doing a check, you can see my slide?
Yes, we can, thanks.
So as Chair Chaff mentioned, this is a public hearing decision-making item related to the Marketplace project. This is the approved PUD, PDP for the Marketplace, or, you know, the master plan, so to speak, which was approved back in 2008. Since then, a number of final development plans were issued by the Planning Commission, and construction began on several things. The Christie Park has been built, and Parcels D and C have been built. Regarding parcel A and B, we have existing entitlements. On parcel A, the entitlements are for housing development, and on parcel B, the entitlements are for an R&amp;D and parking and some retail at the bottom. In April of 2000 last year, there was a change in ownership, and the new owners, which is the Oxford Properties, submitted a revised proposal for Parcels A and B. So since for the last year, the Commission and the council have been reviewing their revised proposals for parcel A and B on several occasions. And the last time that the Commission saw this was in May. And just to remind you of what this proposal is, it's essentially two buildings. It's an R&amp;D building you see on your left and the parking garage on your right. And this is what you saw in May, and this is another closer version of that and another direction for that. In order, so today, we are not going to be talking about these buildings, and today is not where we are going to be considering for approval these buildings. This will come at a later time. However, in order for these buildings to receive an FDP, there are a couple of changes that need to be made to the master plan or the PUD or PDP, as well as to the development agreement. And that is what is today in front of you, the amendments to the PUD, PDP, and the amendments to the development agreement. In terms of the next steps, as I mentioned, at today's hearing, the Commission will be making a recommendation to the City Council on the amendments to the PDP and the development agreement. And subsequently, on September 20th, the council will review that, and it needs to go through two readings, which would be done, the second one would be done on October 4th. Then on October 27th, the final development plan for the buildings will come in front of you for consideration for approval. So it would be at that time that you look at the buildings, the site plan, and make any comments that you may have. So back to the amendments to the PDP. As I mentioned, there are two existing entitlements at the Marketplace that have not yet been built. One is a residential project, 467 units on parcel A, and a research and development building accommodating actually 420,000 square feet of R&amp;D spaces and associated parking. The PDP currently shows a residential tower on parcel A, but the conditions of approval allow conversion to R&amp;D uses, provided that there are at least 10 house, 10 townhomes on it. As the proposal does not include any residential development, an amendment to the PDP is needed in order to remove that condition. So this is the condition in the PUD, PDP. And what you see underlined is the added language, and what you see deleted is the language in cross. So what this condition does is it removes the requirement of building 10 townhomes from parcel A to parcel F, which has been identified as retail bag number one in the condition of approval. The second amendment that is needed here is a clarification on the height. So currently, there is a maximum height of 120 feet, and the recommendation is to change that to 175 feet. And to make this a little bit more clear, what we are looking at, so this is the bridge, and so in this general area, the height limit, the maximum height is 175 feet. And in this area, which says Office 1, the maximum height is 120 feet. The proposed R&amp;D building has the height of 162 feet. So where you have this 175 feet, what is being proposed here is that big plaza, and the R&amp;D building is generally in this area. So we are basically kind of shifting the height from here towards the northern end of the site. In terms of the development agreement, development agreement was approved by the council in December 2015 with the recommendation from the Planning Commission, and it covered a variety of topics, including affordable housing. Specifically, Section 7.1 stipulates that the parcel A shall include 18 affordable units. As I mentioned before, there are no residential development on parcel A, so in order to build the revised proposal, the development agreement needs to be modified to remove this obligation. The removal of this obligation will be made in conjunction with the following changes or amendments to the DA. One is remittance of $20 million to the city's Affordable Housing Fund. Second is commitment from applicant to support any application to secure affordable housing tax units. And third, an agreement to pedestrianize Market Drive south of 62nd Street between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. seven days a week. So these were covered at the last May study session, so this should not be anything new. So in terms of the findings that you need to make for the PUD amendment, these are the seven findings. Staff believes these findings can be made, and they have been outlined in your staff report as well as the resolution. These are the findings that the Commission need to make in order to approve the amendments to the development agreement, and we believe they can be made, and they have also been outlined in the staff report and the resolution. An EIR was prepared for the PUD, PDP in 2008, and the SEQA section provides that once an EIR has been prepared, no subsequent or supplemental EIR is needed, provided that there are no substantial changes to the project that require substantial revisions to the EIR, that there are no substantial changes with respect to the circumstances under which the EIR was first prepared, and that there is no new information of importance that has emerged since the EIR was prepared. An environmental checklist was prepared that was attached to the staff report that confirms that no new EIR or supplemental EIR is required for the project. So that concludes my presentation, and we are recommending that the Commission adopt the two resolutions, recommending that the City Council approve the proposed amendments to the PDP and to the project DA. So if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer. The applicant does not have a presentation, but their team is available for any questions that you might have.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Muru. So first, I'll turn to the commissioners and ask if anyone has any clarifying questions Okay. I don't see any clarifying questions right now. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant at this time? Nope? Okay, great. So then why don't we move on to the public hearing? So Charlie, could you read the public comments on the agenda items section of the COVID
Yes, thank you. Now is the time for public comment on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for me to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press *9 on your phone. As I previously indicated, I do have one online speaker card. I do not see the person who submitted that card in the audience, so I'm assuming I will just read it. We also do have one member of the audience who would like to speak, and that is Rod Henry. Shall we allow him to speak first?
Yes. So I think the public, we'll say that the public hearing is now open at 6:49.
Good point. Thank you.
And yes, please allow Rod Henry to speak.
All righty. Oh, whoops. Okay, you may go ahead, Mr. Henry. You can unmute yourself.
Yes. My name is Rod Henry, Christie Avenue resident, and I think, and I generally support the terms of this agreement. I think it's a reasonable change. However, there is one thing that really troubles me, and that is I understand the construction of the townhouses on parcel F have no timing indicated for that. And what that means is, you know, that they could wait for a very long time, or they could do their entire project, build it all out, and then perhaps try and say, oh, well, you know, things have changed, or sell it off to somebody, or whatever. So the fact that there is no timing, I think, is very concerning. As you know, this parcel would be something that they would not want to build until the very end. And so I think I would recommend that the Planning Commission add some kind of timing or incentive for this to happen before, during, as part of the project. So, for example, let's say they finish their project and wait another 10 years. I don't think that's something we want to have happen. So as you know, sometimes they put in requirements, like before you can get your TCO, they have to complete the townhouse project. The other thing I wanted to mention is I think the $20 million affordable housing money, they have negotiated. It's, I'm glad that the City Council renegotiated that figure. I think it's quite a reasonable figure, and because I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that roughly a million dollars per unit is what it takes to build affordable housing when you include construction costs and soft costs. Construction costs being 600,000 to 700,000 per unit, and you add in the soft costs, and when you figure the inflation, because this payment will be given out over many years, it's probably going to be less than a million dollar a unit in today's costs, yes, in today's costs over the time period. So I think this was the kind of minimum figure that was reasonable, and I'm glad that it was renegotiated and that that amount was decided upon. And I hope this sets a precedent for future developments that are also trying to reach such an agreement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Charlie, do you want to go ahead and read the online speaker card that you received?
Yes, I will do that. Sorry, I'm trying to move him back to attendees. I didn't see how to do that.
First things first.
Yes, sorry. All right. Let me pull that up. Okay. I will also time this for three minutes. This is from Lisa Findley, 6019 Christie Avenue. I make my comments as a professor of architecture and as a nearby resident who is intimately familiar with these parcels and the long trajectory for development. The development of these parcels has been a consistently moving target. It feels to me as a resident that the developers have been slowly moving the goalposts. While it is understandable that they have to respond to economic conditions, the job of the Planning Commission is to make sure that our city evolves in a way that is healthy and that is for the long-term benefit of all of us. Right now, the proposal seems to benefit only the developer. The idea that parcel F is a good place to build 10 townhouses is absurd. Remember, it was originally designated retail for good reason. It is a small site on a very busy, noisy intersection, and given the proposals for 5850, will be right up against and overwhelmed by an enormous 200-foot-plus tower to the west. It will be even busier should the loop happen so that anyone going north on Christie from Powell will have to pass by it, then busier still with the approvals of 5850 and 5801 developments. I asked the commissioners, would you want to live on this corner? This is a simple question I often pose my students as they design. What makes an apartment building, neighborhood, or city that you would want to live in? This test is critical. Just because it is affordable for people who make less than the median income should not change what we expect of a building and its livability. The developers of 5801 Christie showed us in your last meeting that residential can be placed on top of a parking garage in a way that benefits everyone. Yes, it is more expensive, and yes, it has to subsidize by the biotech development. So what, I ask? Our tiny city in its ideal proximity to San Francisco is not a place where developers can simply come to make a profit. Please do not allow these developers to walk away from the mixed use with residential zoning for the sites they purchased. I recognize that parcel F is a difficult parcel, but the developers knew that when they bought it. It is my understanding that the 5850 developers would be happy to purchase it. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this item. And that concludes, let me just double-check. I see no more raised hands among the attendees, and I'll check my email one last time. I do not have any more online speaker cards. So that concludes the public comments on this item.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we'll say that the public hearing is now closed at 6:55. So thank you both for your comments. So now let's bring this back to the Commission for deliberation. Is there anyone, any commissioner that would like to start? No? Okay. I might call on you. Commissioner Mora, would you like to go?
Sure. I think I agree with Rod's assessment that he made during the public comment. I think it would be helpful to reach out to the developer and what the timeline is. As far as the townhomes in that existing location, I mean, honestly, that doesn't seem like much better of a location for townhomes than Lot F. So honestly, the agreement negotiated by the City Council seems reasonable. The dollar amount seems fair, and I think the payout is, it's not spread out that long, so I think you can benefit from it. Overall, I support it. I'd like to hear the developer respond to the time concern.
Chair Chaff?
Charlie, go ahead.
If I may, I would just like to clarify the issue of the 10 units on parcel F. The developer is not proposing to build 10 units on parcel F. That is not part of their plan. That was actually initiated by staff as a place to relocate the 10 townhome units that the PUD conditions of approval called for on parcel A. And the reason for that is because if we don't still allow for those 10 townhome units somewhere on the PUD site, we could run into a situation where we are reducing the number of entitled units on the overall PUD property, which could be interpreted as to run afoul of state law regarding housing. You're not supposed to reduce your zoned capacity for housing. So this would maintain the zoned capacity for those 10 townhome units by moving them from parcel A to parcel F. But I want the commissioners to be clear that these developers are not proposing to build those 10 units on parcel F. They never have proposed that, and we're just preserving the ability for them or any other developer in the future to build those 10 units at some point.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Yeah, Commissioner Mora, did you want to respond to that at all?
No, thanks, Charlie. It's helpful clarification in background.
Okay, great. So I'll move on to Commissioner Graham. Do you have any comments or assessments you want to share with us?
I think we reviewed this project very well in previous studies, and the City Council and developer came up with a good number, and they're providing 18 units in other places. So I fully support this project with this condition, and I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Graham.
Yeah, generally speaking, I've been looking at the geometry of this area a lot and what we're trying to build here, and I do have to agree that parcel F is not an ideal location to put residential units, but I also take this, take this note from staff and, yeah, yeah, it's not a great, it's not a great corner to be putting housing on. I think that there are other aspects of this that are not on the table tonight that I also disagree with in the totality of what's being moved. But if what we are just doing is preserving the ability to But if what we are just doing is preserving the ability to build housing there, then I suppose I don't have any further objections to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wax. So I think that leaves me, and similar to other commissioners, I don't really have any objections to this. I think that, you know, we'll talk about some of the other aspects of the project in another meeting. The pedestrianization that's been mentioned is really exciting to me, and I look forward to learning more about that at an appropriate time. So I don't have much more to add. Yeah. So I think most of our comments so far have focused on the housing issue. And I did want to clarify that there are two votes that we're going to take. So one is on the amendment to the PUD, and then the other is on the amendment to the development agreement, which has to do with the height. Is there anything else that anyone wants to add about the height?
Just to clarify, Chair Chief, the height issue is in the PUD amendment.
Oh, sorry.
And the development agreement is about the $20 million payment for, instead of building the 18 affordable units.
Thank you, thank you for correcting that. Okay. Any further comments? Otherwise, we would move to looking for a motion on the proposed resolutions. Okay, great. So I think we have one resolution, which is CPC, adopt a resolution, CPC number... You can help me with this, Staff, if I'm getting this wrong. PUD 0402A? So we'll do that one first?
Right, that's the PUD amendment.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion on that one?
I made a motion.
Do you need seconds? Okay.
Moved by Commissioner Dram, seconded by Commissioner Mora. On the motion, Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Ghizoni is recused. Commissioner Henme is recused. Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons is absent. Commissioner, Chair Chief?
Aye.
Four ayes, the motion is approved. And now we need a motion on the development agreement amendment.
Would anyone like to make a motion on DA 15-001A?
I'll make a motion to support it.
I second it.
I believe that was Commissioner Mora made the motion, and Commissioner Dram seconded.
Correct.
All right, on the motion to recommend that the city council approve the amendment to the development agreement, Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Ghizoni is recused. Commissioner Henme is recused. Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
And Chair Chief?
Aye.
Four ayes, that motion is also approved. Thank you. We will forward your recommendations on both of these items to the city council.
Great, thank you. All right, that brings us to item 9.1, which is an administrative item regarding four different properties on 47th Street and a certificate of compliance appeal.
Hold on just a quick second. Chair Chief, I'm sorry, I needed to text Commissioner Ghizoni, and I need to move Commissioner Henme back into the room. Oh, he's already...
I think I'm still...
You're still there? Okay, good. All right, sorry, you can go ahead now. Well, Mr. Ghizoni's not here yet, so we probably ought to wait for him to...
Yeah, we can wait for him.
Return. There he is.
Okay, great, welcome back, Commissioner Ghizoni.
Thank you.
From your short vacation. All right, so we're now going to move on to item 9.1. And I don't think there's any conflict of interest related to this, correct, Charlie?
That's correct, not that I'm aware of.
So could we please have the staff presentation? I think Anna-Lisa, that's you, right?
Good evening, Chair, good evening, commissioners. Let me get my screen settled here. Okay. Are you looking at my PowerPoint?
We can see your PowerPoint. It's not in full screen, but I think it's fine to read it that way.
Okay.
That's better.
So today we'll be presenting an appeal for the 47th Street Certificate of Compliance. This is a consideration of an appeal of staff's determination that a parcel map rather than a certificate of compliance is a required legal method for creating four separate parcels for each of the four existing houses at 1034, 1036, 1038, and 1042, 47th Street. So the property is located from 47th Street to 53rd Street, between Adeline and San Pablo Avenue. And it's actually comprised of two parcels. So there are 12 units on one parcel and two units on the other. And the four homes in question are outlined in red. In October of 2020, the city council approved the demolition of the four houses and construction of three duplexes, each containing two units under UPDR 2218. The council approval is valid until October 2022. Lumac, the new owner, has opted not to pursue the approved project, and instead they wish to sell the four homes individually, hence the need for four separate parcels. The property was acquired by Lumac Investments LLC, and David Burchard is the managing partner for Lumac Investments. In October of 2021, David contacted the staff to discuss separating the four houses located at 1034, 1036, 1038, and 1042, 47th Street into four separate parcels. So here are the four homes along 47th Street. And again, they are on the same parcel. So staff corresponded with David Burchard via email, phone calls, and Zoom meetings. Staff and David Burchard, including members of Alcott Societies, requested that city issue certificates of compliance for four separate parcels for each of the four houses. They provided some documentation regarding the property, but there was no indication that the four houses were ever on their own individual parcel. And Mr. Burchard did not provide documentation to support that they ever existed on their own separate parcel. So here's a survey from a different project in 2018. And this shows the two separate parcels, one outlined in green and the other outlined in blue. They each have their own APN number highlighted. And the four homes are located there on the right end of the green parcel along 47th Street. So per Section 96106B of our planning regulations, if the city engineer determines that the real property complied with the provisions of the Subdivision Map Act, the city would file a certificate of compliance, and that would identify that the real property complies with the provisions of the Subdivision Map Act. But because there was never evidence of the houses being on separate lots, they were not eligible for the certificates of compliance. The city attorney, John Kennedy, issued a letter on June of 2022 in response to Attorney Rubin's mail letters that were sent on behalf of the appellant, as well as prior phone conversations between city staff, including our consulting engineer and Attorney Rubin. In the letter, Kennedy outlines Government Code Section 66499.35A, which requires compliance with the Subdivision Map Act in order to obtain a certificate of compliance. Again, without documentation indicating that four separate parcels previously existed, a map parcel is required to create the four separate parcels in compliance with the SMA. And pursuant to Section 96106D of our planning regulations, a recorded parcel map constitutes a certificate of compliance with respect to the parcels of real property described on that map. So the appellant maintains that the property is eligible for four certificates of compliance under Sections 66499.34 and Government Code Section 66499.35 of the Subdivision Map Act, and appealed the community development director's decision to refuse the issuance of the certificates. Staff's direction to the applicant was, given the four houses share a lot with 10 other homes, a lot line adjustment was needed to move the lot line over, which would create a single lot with the four houses. A parcel map is required for all divisions of land into four or fewer parcels. And an exception to standards is required to avoid creating nonconformities on the parcel adjacent to the proposed parcel, which would reduce the minimum required yard setback of 15 feet to 10 feet. And this three-step process was such to the appellant, and it is an administrative process. And so to show you what we suggested, we have the two parcels here. The yellow line would be the lot line adjustment that would then create the parcel with the four homes. An exception to standard would be applied at the same time as the lot line adjustment to account for any nonconformities that were created. And then the parcel map would create the three lines in red, which would then put these four separate houses onto their four separate parcels. So the planning commission has three options: to either affirm the decision of the director and dismiss the appeal based on a determination that the facts do not warrant a further hearing, set a date for a public hearing on the appeal, or remand the matter to the director to cure a deficiency. Staff recommends that the planning commission dismiss the appeal. If the commission wishes to consider the appeal, we recommend a planning commission hearing for the next date, which is September 22nd. That concludes my presentation. The appellant would like to present as well.
Thank you, Anna-Lisa. First of all, I'll ask if there are any clarifying questions for Anna-Lisa from any of the commissioners. Okay, I don't see any. So I would like to invite that... Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask Anna-Lisa. I only see David Burchard and Chris McCormick. Is Chris McCormick with the appellant?
No.
I do not see the other name that you gave me.
John.
Yeah, he's not here. So I'm going to promote David Burchard to the panel so that he can address you. And I don't see anyone else. All right. And Chair Chief, I believe you indicated that he would be given five minutes.
Yes, please.
All right. You may go ahead, sir.
Charlie, I don't see him elevated... I don't see him in the attendee list either. Oh, here we go.
Oh, did he... Maybe he got stuck in cyberspace.
Yeah.
All right, you may go ahead, Mr. Burchard. You need to unmute?
Okay, hi, Commissioner. This is David Burchard. I am the managing partner for Lumac Investments. We purchased this property a little over a year ago. And the intention was always to keep these four homes on 47th Street. We were not, you know, we didn't find the project that was previously proved financially feasible. And so we were proceeding with dividing these four homes and meeting with, you know, many recognized professionals in the industry that have been through this process many times. And their recommendation, and how I read the law, and how they have read the law, and how other jurisdictions and cities have read the law, where there are improvements and permits that have been given out previously, that a certificate of compliance is a right, and it would need to be signed off by the city. And the gist of it, these are, you know... All the work has been done for the certificates of compliance. It's a process of drawing those same lines that were just shown to you. And, you know, with meets and bounds descriptions, and that's it. And rather than going the long route, the costly route, and, you know, obviously for our time, the engineers' time, the city's time. And, you know, these certificates of compliance in this same scenario has been signed off by many jurisdictions, many cities, many counties. And so, you know, the appeal that we're here today is for the certificates of compliance. The... We really maintain that a parcel map is not necessary. It clearly states in the MAP Act that a certificate of compliance provides for recognition of these parcels. And the end product is the exact same. It's just a matter of paying more time to the engineers, more money, back and forth, you know, with the city. And in the end, you have the same exactly. So, and I'm not an expert, I'm just a small developer. And I do have an expert here with me. John is with me in the office, so that's why he didn't show up on his own computer. But I want to turn it over to him to just kind of give a little bit more. He's done this many, many times, going back 30 years. So I'm going to turn it over to John.
Let me...
Chair Chief, excuse me. I believe we said we'd give each speaker five minutes, so...
That's correct. If you can start timing for five minutes now.
I'll reset the clock, yes. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I signed up for it, so I think we're... Okay. Anyway, what I wanted to state, several things. One is that, first of all, in terms of the actual properties, there is going to be no change of use other than that there will be single-owner homes instead of rental properties. The appearance will not change. The addresses will not change. The services will not change whatsoever. There have been building permits issued to each of these homes, issued to the individual homes at their individual addresses, not as portion A of an overall property. They're individual issued permits. Each of these homes is completely independent of all other homes on the entire property. Each home has their own EGE, they have their own water, they have their own gas, they have their own direct driveway access to 47th Street. There are no easements to cross over to other portions of any of these homes or any other properties on this overall parent property. There's no change of use whatsoever, appearance, et cetera. The thing that we are going on, and I've done this before, is that we maintain that pursuing... Obtaining certificates of compliance directly rather than going through parcel maps is fully compliant with the MAP Act, specifically Section 66499.34, which says, "The issuance of a permit or grant of approval for developments of real property with respect to improvements that have been completed at the time of permit or grant's approval with required by local ordinance shall constitute real property which has been approved for development under purposes of..." been approved for development under purposes of Section C of 66499.35. And upon request by the person owning the real estate or vending, the local agency shall issue a certificate of compliance. So if then granted a permit for development to the individual piece of property under this provision of the MAP Act and subdivision C of the following 66499.35. Subdivision... Section C of 66499.35 says that a certificate of compliance shall be issued for any real property that has been approved for development prior to 66499.34. And we maintain that each parcel, each of these four parcels, has been a parcel that approved for... Has been approved for development pursuant to the section before. And of course, a parcel map, legal state is, and you cited that in your presentation, that a parcel map shall constitute a certificate of compliance we expect to depart from property described above. What I would like to add here is that a certificate of compliance is even a more legal document than a reported map of a final or a parcel map, in that the subdivision map now provides for the agency to discard antiquated subdivisions, whereas a certificate of compliance indicates that the agency has thoroughly reviewed the individual parcel, and it meets requirements. Now, these homes were built prior to 1947. They were built in the 30s, and one of the homes, the most westernly home, was built in 1905.
That is the speaker's five minutes, Chair Chafe.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you for your comments or your presentation. Are there any clarifying questions for the appellant from the commissioners?
Do you have a second?
No, that was your five minutes.
Hmm?
That was your five minutes.
That's my five minutes.
I see Commissioner Dram, you've unmuted yourself. Would you like to go ahead?
Yes, I just would like to ask what's the reason of this subdivision?
Is that a question for the appellant?
Yes.
Okay. Would either of the speakers from the appellant's side like to answer that question?
Yeah, the reason to separate these four homes is to make it financially feasible, the project, to sell, and retain those four homes, as we've already pulled permits to and are working on nicely, while we're building these houses.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore, go ahead.
It seems like an administrative path has been identified, and, you know, our... The city's experts, city staffs, the attorney have advised us that that is the correct administrative path. Can I ask why... Why are you so opposed to pursuing this other administrative route? I mean, you alluded, Mr. Burchard, you alluded to it, obviously, including a bit more work, but could you go into that a little bit more? You know, I'd like to... You know, it seems like this dispute's really gotten to a point where, you know, I'm surprised it wouldn't have been resolved earlier, you know, just as regarding the law and how these can be divided up properly. If you could speak to that.
Yeah, so speaking with experts, speaking with other agencies, and going through the process of certificate of compliance, we thought was the easiest way, which we have done, and the experts have done numerous times. They... It still requires engineering, it still requires legal descriptions and all that stuff. That was completed. Now, to do another process takes, you know, another... I mean, the cost of carrying, the cost of the work, the cost of doing business would, you know, it would double, triple, quadruple, you know, who knows? Then you've got market conditions and everything else, and it's an endless, you know, blank check to require something that we didn't believe, and we still don't believe, is the path to do it correctly. We believe certificates of compliance are far superior than a parcel map, and we also think it's legal. And that's... We have attorneys that worked on this and know the law, and have worked in other agencies and have been through this before. So it's not... It's not something that we were prepared for and wanted to do. If we had gone the other direction, we would have, but we thought that was the way. But we believe truly this is the way.
Can I add something here? Attorney Stalia of the formerly the Supreme Court Justice wrote a 500-page book on reading the law. What he says is in his Canon 6, words are to be understood in their ordinary, everyday meaning unless the context indicates the bare technical sense. The other is omitted case Canon 8, nothing is to be added what the text states or reasonably implies, that is, if it's not covered, it is not to be treated as covered. Your city attorney seems to be adding other things to Section C of 66499.35, which cannot be added. The text for the MAP Act is extremely clear on this, that if you have a permit on the property, and it is made under the laws applicable when the property was created... Actually, this property is compliant with current requirements for building and every code, all the codes. Not only was it compliant when it was made, which was in the 30s and earlier, it's compliant now. So all a certificate of compliance does is a statement that the parcel complies with the MAP Act. And we maintain that these parcels, as we have submitted it, do comply with the MAP Act. And I've given examples in the... In the appeal, actually, in Appendix 9, where the city of Lafayette, which is extremely difficult, has stated specifically that in granting their certificate of appeal of compliance, they said, "At the time, there was no requirement to report a parcel map for the subdivision." And at this time, there was no requirement, there was no way to require a subdivision map in the 1930s when these were built. But based on the property background information, the property was issued permits for the development of two separate, single-family homes, each with typical improvements for improvement. Therefore, the property is considered real property approved for development, compliant with Subdivision MAP Act 66499.34. And this is Lafayette. That's a difficult jurisdiction. And they pointed out that you do not need to have separate individual lots.
Thank you. Thanks for that explanation. I think we're starting to move away from the direct answer a little bit, so thank you for the answer to Commissioner Moore's question. Commissioner, I see your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yes. And my question is, were you to do this, this doesn't... You know, it sounds like you've already done surveying work and some legal definitions. So I'm wondering, can you tell me how much more it would cost to follow the city procedure? It seems to me it might be 10K or something. And in terms of your argument that this is causing you carrying costs and whatever, I'm sorry, but I don't buy that argument at all, because if you would have immediately followed the city procedure, I would assume you'd be done with this. So you have chosen to fight back, and any carrying costs are the result of your choice in those terms. So if you were, and frankly, if you were to just immediately do it right now, it would probably reduce your carrying costs. So can you give me a sense on how much this would actually cost to do what the city is asking?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're going back to January. I thought that certificates of compliance would be signed off, so that was, you know, ten months ago. Had I started the process the other way, I don't know. That's an unknown. I know the process with certificates of compliance. As far as going to go through the process of a lot line adjustment and all the other stuff, and, you know, we're north of 50,000, for sure.
Okay. Commissioner Gesani, did you have a clarifying question?
Yes, I do. I noticed that Section 66499.35A seems to give weight to a local agency, which I would assume in this case would be Emeryville, and allows them to determine whether or not the real property complies with provisions of that, of this division. And I note that in the appeal letter from June, that there's an assertion that Section C stands apart from all other sections, which does not really make sense to me. Pieces of code... I don't think we get to just pick and choose pieces of code that align with our own personal outcomes that we would like to see and dispose of others, but I'd like to hear how you address that.
Okay. Sixty... The Section C of 66499.35 does not stand into any relationship to any portion of the MAP Act other than 66499.34, real property that has been approved for development. These two sections are straightforward, they are very clear, and they are self-contained and complete. The exclusions principle that I just cited, the Canon 8, points out that nothing is to be added to what the state, the text states or reasonably implies. Section 66499.34 and 66499.35C are self-contained and complete, and nothing else needs to be added. A is not part of either one of those provisions.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gesani.
I just want to ask first, when might we have a chance to ask the city attorney a question?
Yeah, great question. Why don't we see if there are any other clarifying comments for the appellant, and then we will demote them, and then we can ask the question of the city attorney?
Sounds good.
Are there any other clarifying questions right now for the appellant? Okay, seeing none, Charlie, if you could demote them. And then Commissioner Gesani, go ahead with your...
Just Mr. Burchard, hang on a second, please.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, I've moved Mr. Burchard back to the attendee group.
Okay.
At least, I think I have.
Yep, there we go. All right, Commissioner Gesani, please go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for Christie, and my first is, do you agree that subsection A has no effect on subsection C?
No, and the general principles of statutory construction state that you personally look at the plain meaning and plain text of individual subsections, but obviously, these subsections are all part of 6649.35. There are subdivisions A, B, C, D, and E in that section, and also the title, I would note, of 66499.35 is Certificate of Compliance, states compliance with the MAP Act, and then it has those five subdivisions underneath it. So no, I disagree with the assertion that somehow subsection C should be read alone.
Thank you. That answered both my questions, and thanks.
Okay. So any other clarifying questions for staff right now? Nope. Okay, so seeing none, then we will move to public comment. Charlie, why don't I go ahead and open the public comment period at 7:35, and then, Charlie, if you can go ahead and read the public comments on agenda items. Good.
Thank you. Chair Chafe, now is the time for public comment on this agenda item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for me to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine on your phone. I have checked my email, and I have not received any online comment cards for this item up to this point. There is one raised hand among the attendees. This is Albert. I will call on Albert now to speak for three minutes. You may go ahead and unmute.
Albert, if you can hear us, you're on mute. Do you want to try and unmute?
Oh, he put his hand down. He... They put their hand down, so I guess... Oh, no, up again. You can go ahead and unmute yourself. There you go.
I think I'm... Good evening, Planning Commission. So my name is Albert Lucery. I'm a member of the local carpentry here in Emeryville. Been here for about 15 years, and I just want to talk to you about some things that kind of concern me as far as the development of this project. I seen that I came late because I was working, so I didn't take... I couldn't get to the meeting on time, but I seen that they're trying to take the 20 units out of the low-income properties by supplying you guys 20 million. I think that's not right.
Albert, apologies for interrupting you, but I just want to make sure that you're commenting on the item that we're on right now, which is 9.1.
Which is one of my...
47th Street, four houses on 47th Street.
Oh, I think it's the wrong one. Okay, cool. So I'll get on the other one. Does the other one pass by you already?
Yes.
It has, unfortunately, yes.
Okay. Cool.
Thank you.
I will note, though, that that item will be considered by the city council on September 20th, so you can...
Okay.
Address the city council about it.
Thank you for taking the time, Albert.
Thank you.
Let me just double-check my email to see if I have any online speaker cards. I do not have any online speaker cards, and I do not see any further hands raised among the attendees.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. So if there's no one else waiting to speak, then the public comment period is now closed at 7:38. And so now we're gonna come back for deliberation, and this is the time to share any thoughts you have or comments about this item. Is there anyone that would like to go first?
Can I make a clarifying comment?
Yes.
Chair Chafe, I just want to address the appellant's assertion about the developable parcels and the building permit issuance consideration. It is correct that these four houses have four separate addresses, and building permits have been issued for the various addresses. I would also note that it is not unusual to have multiple buildings on the same property that have different addresses, and we do issue building permits by address. That does not mean that the separate buildings with separate addresses are on separate parcels. Every one of our building permits is also identified by APN, Assessor Parcel Number. And if you look at the Assessor Parcel Number for these four houses for the building permits, you would see that they are all the same, because they're all on the same parcel. Concerning that making it property that's approved for development, well, yes, the city council previously approved three duplexes on this property as a single parcel. Concerning a certificate of compliance for that, yes, we could issue a certificate of compliance today for that parcel. It's a large parcel. It's a large parcel that contains about 12 houses, I believe, including these four. So we could issue a certificate of compliance for that one large parcel. We cannot issue a certificate of compliance for these four houses on individual parcels, because those lot lines, as Annalisa said, never previously existed. And that's what a certificate of compliance is for. It's to confirm lot lines that previously existed.
Thank you, Charlie. Very helpful. Are there any commissioners that would like to go first?
I ask, is there any merit to the assertion from... I ask, is there any merit to the assertion from the appellant about the, how, there seemed to be this suggestion that Emeryville was unique in its reluctance to accept their approach despite the administrative process outlined? Is there anything to that?
Would you like to address that to the attorney's office, city attorney's office, or anybody who wants to?
I guess anybody who has knowledge on it, you know, like, is Emeryville doing something special, you know, that Lafayette is or other areas are not? Like, are we making this unnecessarily burdensome in some way?
Hello? I'll just...
I can take that.
Okay, go ahead, Christie.
Sure, sure. Thanks, Commissioner Mora. No, the city is not doing anything diff, well, the city may be doing something different than other cities are doing, I don't know, but the city cannot legally issue certificates of compliance here to this property because the property does not, it's not subdivided. It doesn't comply with the MAP Act. It hasn't been legally subdivided and that is one of the instances in which you can issue a certificate of compliance. If other cities are, you know, doing things different, I don't know. If they're not complying with the law, I don't know, but the law says that the city can issue a certificate of compliance if we have a legally subdivided lot and we don't have one of those here. Just for a little bit of background, not to get too far into it, and City Attorney Kennedy's letter gets into it a little bit, but the subdivision MAP Act was enacted in order to regulate use and control of land in California. And it requires subdivisions to comply with regulations, local regulations, like sewer and water hookup, electricity hookup, make sure that we have standard lot width and length requirements that are met, setbacks that are met. And when, so subdivisions regulate that use and control and land and for somebody to come in and just say, well, you should just grant me a subdivision without going through the approval process, without coming to the city and saying, I'm going to comply with all of the local regulations and controls, get an approval of an upper real subdivision map by your body, the planning commission, that's just an end run around the law. So a certificate of compliance is normally issued when there is a map in place, as Charlie said, or sometimes certificates of compliance are issued if there's what's called an antiquated subdivision map, which is a map that existed before the subdivision MAP Act even was enacted. And you can demonstrate that there were historic parcel lines somewhere. Here, we don't have any evidence that these four houses were ever on separate lots and the applicant hasn't provided any evidence of separate lots here for those four houses to the city. So the city legally cannot issue a certificate of compliance without evidence that they've complied with the MAP Act. So here, we're legally precluded of issuing these certificates.
And if I could just add, the applicant, the one example that I saw that the applicant provided, I may have been from Lafayette, of a certificate of compliance, that application was for a number of parcels that already had APNs. These parcels already had Assessor Parcel Numbers. And the city then issued a certificate of compliance based on the parcels that were defined by those APNs. So obviously, that property had already been subdivided somehow because they already had APNs assigned to them. That's a completely different situation than what we have here. There are not separate APNs for each of these four houses, they're all on one large parcel.
And just one last clarifying question. Did they, did the appellant ever reach out to the city and to understand the process or did they pursue some other process they thought was correct? And they, you know, had they reached out, they could have known the proper way to do this via the parcel?
Well, as Annalisa indicated in her presentation, we had endless meetings and phone calls with them over the last, I don't know how long, many, many months, outlining what the process is that they will need to follow for us. So this is not something that they just did all of a sudden. We've been advising them of this process for months and months.
Understood, thank you, Charlie.
Great. Commissioner Mora, would you like to make any comments or assessments on this?
Not much beyond what I've already said. I think we rely on the staff and city attorney. It sounds like the process has been clearly illustrated for the appellant. It seems like we just, it seems like it was not followed or there was, they thought they were right to pursue some other route and that's what got us here. I'm inclined to defer to the staff recommendation at this point.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Gisani, go ahead.
I would say that I am also inclined to go along with the city attorney and staff recommendation. I think that they're asking us to do something that would put us at odds with the SMA and the SMA's purpose. And I also find the suggestion that one can pick and choose parts of a statute and exclude other parts of a statute to be troubling, and I don't think that that's, that's not advice that we should be following. We should be taking statutes as they are.
Thank you. Commissioner Wax, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, just while I am somewhat curious why the appellant's experience has been different elsewhere, I also would defer the staff and city attorney on this, I believe, in case the name was quite clear.
Thank you. Commissioner Hemney.
Yes, no, I agree with the previous comments that I think the staff and attorney's analysis is convincing and I believe thorough and I think it's critical for a planning commission to be, to ensure that the city is following, that we are following legal procedures and in this case, the advice of our city attorney. So, and I found many of the arguments against it to not be very convincing, the fact that their utilities or their fact that, yes, permits or the fact that they're, et cetera. Or even the fact that Lafayette may have done something different. To me, that's irrelevant because we are not Lafayette, we are the city of Emeryville and we need to follow the procedures that we believe are the correct ones.
Thank you. Commissioner Dram.
So we've done a lot of subdivision project in our business and our architecture firm, and this is very normal procedure to have a separate parcel map for each unit, from apartment to condo car version conversions or SP9s, that is pretty new, we are doing it. And we cannot make a different route for one applicant and make an exclusion because I don't think it's going to be fair for to other people. So I think we should follow what staff and the city attorney is offering and go to the process. It takes some time, but I think that's the right path to go.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm also inclined to follow the recommendations of the city and the staff report. It sounds to me like there was a very clear process laid out several times. There have been many, many meetings along the way. This has dragged on for a long time and it could have been resolved much quicker had that process been followed. I understand that the appellant feels like something went wrong and wanted to pursue that, but for all the reasons that everyone else has said, it seems that, you know, my understanding is that this is being interpreted correctly by the city of Emeryville and the city attorney's office. There's some good examples in there of what would happen if, if the interpretations were not, you know, basically if the interpretations that are being proposed here were followed, there would be some unintended consequences. So I, yeah, I'm also inclined to follow the staff recommendation. It sounds like we have agreement here. Is there anyone who would like to add anything else or to make a motion? And what we have in front of us again are three options. We can either make a motion to dismiss the appeal, we could make a motion to schedule a public hearing, or we could remand it back to staff for further processing. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
Sure. Go ahead.
I would make a motion to dismiss the appeal.
Second.
All right, are you ready for the roll call vote?
Yes, please.
All right, on the motion to dismiss the appeal, Commissioner Dram.
Aye.
Commissioner Gisani.
Aye.
Commissioner Hemney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mora.
Aye.
Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Chair Chaff.
Aye.
Six ayes, the appeal is dismissed. His decision is final, it may not be further appealed to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let me just switch back to my agenda here. Okay, so that brings us to item 10, which is planning commissioner comments. Does anyone have a comment that they would like to make? Okay, great. I'd just like to welcome the new commissioners who I'm meeting for the first time since I was absent. I'm so glad to have you on the commission. Thank you very much for offering your time and service and, yeah, you seem like experts already. That's it from my side.
Thank you.
Great. All right, then we will move to item 11, which is adjournment at 7:51. Thank you all for an efficient meeting.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Hi, good night.